Good evening, everyone. Could you please join me in saluting the flag? And after the pledge of allegiance, could we please stand for a moment? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just for all. It's my sad duty to inform people that we've lost a good friend in the city and to the Brockton Public Schools. Janice Byer, who served for many years as a school committee person and certainly as a teacher, many people knew that. She served at the Kennedy School, passed away recently. So, we'd just like to take a moment of silence for Janice. Thank you. I'd like to just start out by expressing my condolences, and I know the mayor expressed his condolences and wanted me to tell people that he had the privilege of serving two years with Janice. It was his first term on the school committee, and he served with Janice for two years. I served with Janice for four, Mrs. Joyce for six. And there are many people in the room that certainly spent time with Janice. Janice was, as we all know, a wonderful person. She loved the kids more than most people I know. She always had a smile on her face, and she was a teacher for 32 years, is that correct? Over at the Kennedy School, she was certainly a staple at that school, and many of us know how much she loved reading, and she loved the Little Red Schoolhouse, and she organized for so many years the Spelling Bee and did a wonderful job. And I remember, I would say the most important thing that Janice did at that Spelling Bee was she didn't have to calm down the kids. She did a great job of calming down their parents because the parents were so worked up for the kids, and she would just tell them to relax. Your children are smart and know what they're going to have to do. You parents need to calm down because you're getting more worked up than the kids. And she was just a lovely person, so we're going to miss her. And I'd like to just acknowledge Mrs. Joyce, who served for six years with Mrs. Byer. Mrs. Joyce, do you want to say a few words?
Of course I do. Janice was a loving soul. She was kind to anybody and everyone. She never had a mean thing to say about anyone, and she always looked for the best in everyone. She could always see what was good about everybody. And her passion for education was evident, and most importantly, her passion for the children in Brockton was evident by everything that she did. And she'll be greatly missed. She was a great, great advocate for children in the city of Brockton, and she did so much for them, both at the Spelling Bee and through her advocacy on the school committee and as a teacher. So, she really, through all the years, I don't know where she got the energy, because I certainly don't have half the energy that she had well into her 80s. So, I'd like to think that Janice is with the love of her life now, and that was Bill, and that, and I will never forget the two of them together, because they truly were soulmates and very lovely, lovely people to get to know. And I consider it a privilege to have served with her and to have gotten to know her and Bill.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce. Lovely words. Madam Superintendent, would you like to add a few words with regard to Janice?
I would, but before I do...
Well, you're at the grand finale.
Well, I could say so much about her as an educator, so, you know, truly, you know, being an educator in the district first and foremost. It's important to remember Janice, not only with all of the support that she gave to our children, my own children attended the Kennedy School. And the highlight was to do the after-school program with Mrs. Byer. And never mind the love of reading, the sharing of books, I think the grand finale was going to some special, I'm looking out to Mr. Rogan, a special bookstore somewhere where each child could pick out a book. And if you ask my daughter to this day, you know, what was important about the Kennedy School, she would tell you that's exactly it, and it's her love of reading and literacy that Janice, you know, certainly served all of us with and all the children that she educated along the years. I also would like to invite Kim Gibson from our Brockton Education Association, because there's another part of Janice that I'm sure Kim will share with you, and Mr. Brian Rogan, who worked as a teacher at the Kennedy School, the assistant principal at the Kennedy School, and now our principal, and truly was a great friend to Bill and Janice. And I asked him to come here this evening also to talk to us about Janice.
Great.
Thank you for inviting us down. I have to say, when I got news last night of Janice's passing, I immediately told my husband, because Janice always called my husband her boyfriend, because when she met him, it was in the BEA office through her advocacy for teachers and students, and he was, you know, in our dating stages, going back 16 years. He literally was welcomed with open arms by her, and that's who he remembers from the union, the first person him meeting was, Janice Byer with the open arms, saying, "Oh, you must be an angel for supporting your wife." And that was what she was about, was building up other people. And she was honored through Plymouth County during her tenure as a teacher with the Loretta Quinlan Award, which was for outstanding advocacy for her profession, her community, and the association that she belonged to. I know she'll be sorely missed. She was an unbelievable advocate up until, you know, serving on school committee, but in the forefront for Janice and for all of us was always the students. She was advocating for teachers, but she always told people, "Those working conditions are your children's learning conditions." And that's something that stuck with me all the time. She chaired negotiation teams. She was just an advocate for everyone, so I know that she's going to be sorely missed in Brockton. You know, it was very privileged to have her with us.
Good evening. I'm certainly very honored by Mrs. Smith asking me to come and share a few words about Mrs. Byer. A teacher affects eternity, and she can never tell where her influence stops. This quote, I feel, is most appropriate this night as we stop to remember Mrs. Janice Byer. Mrs. Byer was a grade three teacher for over 30 years at the John F. Kennedy School. During her tenure, she instilled a love of reading and a love of learning in so many Kennedy students. She opened the world to her learners by the experiences gained by literature exposure and activities that they enjoyed. Her students had knowledge of authors and genres that were far-reaching. Authors like Marilyn Lengel, Robert McCuskey, and Patricia Palaco were talked about as classroom friends, not distant beings. Her love of sports provided the perfect material to have even the most reluctant math student be excited to figure out the latest player's averages and team stats. Her interest in all of her students and connections that she created with Kennedy families has had a long and lasting influence on the Kennedy community. Mrs. Byer saw one of her most important roles was to encourage. As a teacher, a community member, and then as a school committee member, she was an advocate for the children of Brockton and all that is positive about Brockton Public Schools. How lucky I was to have her influence, working with her as a teacher, an administrator, a colleague, and a friend. Mrs. Byer may never have known how deeply her life has touched others, but the Kennedy School is a better place with her strong influence being a part of it. Thank you for taking time to recognize Janice tonight.
Mrs. Byer, as a student, didn't you?
Byer as a third-grade teacher for English and Math, and one of my favorite things in her classroom was the wall of books. Literally, every year she would add another bookcase to her room and fill it with books that the students could borrow and take home. And as far as the math and stats goes, I remember Mrs. Byer in her long skirts going out and playing soccer with us, and no matter what she was wearing, she would always go out and play with the kids. She was truly a vibrant spirit and a great teacher. And she'll be sadly missed.
She had an infectious laugh as well.
Yes, very infectious.
And one of the things to this day that's carrying on, as Alicia mentioned with the wall of books, when Janice retired, she had so many books that they certainly couldn't fit in her home. So, she lined up crates upon crates upon crates of books in the hallway, and first the teachers were able to get books for their classroom libraries, and then the books that were left, children were able to select. So, in many of the classroom libraries at the Kennedy School, you might pick out a book and see on the inside, you know, Mrs. Byer's stamp. She couldn't write her name in them because she had so many, but she had from a library of Janice Byer and many books still in the Kennedy School will carry that influence as well.
Anyone else?
I think what we do know at this point...
Mr. Jordan.
Yes, I know Janice from the community side, as well as what everybody else talked about in here. She certainly was one of our city's champions, for sure. Any activity that was involving families and children in particular, she was on. I was on most of them, so I saw her almost every meeting I was at. She was always out there, always helpful, first one there, last one to leave, and always put her full self into dealing for the community and the people of Brockton. Certainly will be missed.
I was just going to say that we have gotten word, I did have an opportunity to speak to her daughter Laurel yesterday. She added those same words, Mrs. Joyce, that that's how she felt her parents were together now. And she mentioned that the services will be at, I believe, Conley Funeral Home from 1:00 to 4:00 on Sunday, November 1st. So, we will make sure that we get word out to the school community if they would like to attend those services.
Very good. Okay, thank you for those kind words. I think they're very deserving for Mrs. Byer. As you can tell, I'm not the mayor. The mayor is feeling a bit under the weather this evening, so he asked me to fill in. So, he regrets that he cannot be here for this, but again, he did express his sympathies because, as I mentioned, he served his first two years on the school committee with Mrs. Byer and had fond memories of her. The second portion of our meeting is the hearing of visitors. We do not have anyone that signed in, so we will, I will return this. We do not have anyone. The third part of our meeting is what's called the Consent Agenda. It's where we take routine business of the school committee, and if we can bundle it up, for efficiency purposes, we take one vote. At this opportunity, any member of the school committee can remove an item that they wish to speak independently about or have questions regarding. Is there anyone that would like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay, there is one item that I will remove, and it's the acceptance of donation and backpacks from Costco. So, we will remove item B. A-B. Is this mislettered? A-B-B-C? Should it be A-B-C-D?
Should be.
Okay, so, okay, well, so, C, and so we are going to, can I have a motion then to approve items A, C, and D of the consent agenda?
Just a second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Item B, we would like to invite the representative from Costco. If you could please come up, sir, that would be wonderful. Costco, in its generosity, has awarded 630 backpacks to the Brockton Public Schools for distribution throughout the system. Schools that received the backpacks were Arnon, Baker, Barrett Russell, Brookfield, Davis, Downey, George, Gilmore, Hancock, Kennedy, Raymond, Huntington. Mr. Osteen, thank you for attending. We appreciate your generosity and Costco's generosity. You really helped fill the needs of many of our needy students, and additionally, you've also been generous enough to offer the high school for the Halloween night some candy. Any samples for the committee? Okay, well, we'll still give you a certificate, so I would like to welcome you up and thank you for your generosity.
Thank you so much.
Take some pictures.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate it so much for our kids. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Osteen. This is a kind thing, again, in a district like Brockton, when you talk about getting a new backpack for the opening of school, not only a backpack filled with supplies, those things that make that opening important for every child. So, we can't thank Costco enough as a business partner. I know they do this for children really all over the country. So, please understand how appreciated it is certainly in a district like the Brockton Public Schools, and we hope to be able to continue that partnership. So, please share that with all those at Costco. Thanks, Mr. Osteen.
Yeah, I think it's very meaningful to a student, a child, when they start that new year, and they have that new backpack to go to school with and put all their materials in. It's like the fresh start. So, again, we thank you for your generosity. Next item is Communication, Report of the Superintendent of Schools. Would you like to take over, Madam Superintendent?
I would. First of all, we do have our student representatives out this evening. I got word from Principal Sharon Wolder, and I believe she and the associate principal, I think there's soccer finals tonight, so they'll get here as soon as they can. But that being said, tonight's another exciting night for us. So, tonight we're going to hear about the Dragons from Self Middle School and the Gators from our Angelo School. And I think this is, again, an important part of our meeting where the things that I will share with you are district-wide happenings, but to bring our schools here to share a perspective of what is happening in each of our individual schools, I think, again, let the community see individually all of the great things. So, I'm going to start by inviting, I believe, first on the agenda are the Gators. So, I'd like to invite Principal Marcia Andrade Serpa to come up. Is this a PowerPoint?
So, I'd like to begin by just introducing myself. My name is Marcia Andrade Serpa. I'm the very proud principal of the Angelo School. We're located on North Main Street in the city of Champions. And I became the principal at the Angelo School four years ago, and the most important thing for me at the Angelo is the beauty of the building. I think it is a wonderful cross-section of our community here in Brockton. I'm fond of saying that the Brockton Public Schools has a place for every child, whether you're an English language learner, whether you're a child that has special educational needs, whether you're a child who would benefit from our extraordinary general education program or a talented and gifted program. We have a spot for every child in Brockton, and the Angelo School is no greater, there is no greater example than the Angelo School. We are the most programmatically diverse school in the city. And just to give you a little flavor of who we are, I have a video for you here. I endeavored last year to research our namesake, the Lewis F. Angelo School, and this is what we've done.
My name is Janice. I'm a National Gator. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit...
My name is Cheryl, and I'm a National Gator.
What's your name? My name is Cheryl. I'm a National Gator.
My name is Ethan Toby, and I'm a National Gator.
My name is Sarah. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit...
My name is Kevin, and I'm a National Gator.
My name is Louisa, and I'm a National Gator.
My name is Louisa, and I'm a National Gator.
My name is Ethan Toby, and I'm a National Gator.
My name is Sarah. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit...
My name is Kevin, and I'm a National Gator.
My name is Louisa, and I'm a National Gator.
My name is Louisa, and I'm a National Gator.
My name is Louisa, and I'm a National Gator.
What's up? You know, we, we, we...
I didn't listen to me. I didn't respect me.
We are National Gators.
My name is Jennifer Lyne. I'm a cat, you, aspect that be an Angelina, sin, and often Angelina.
Hello, my name is Ellen. I'm born up here, but made me to be an Angelina, guys, right?
So, I'm a small gator.
(singing) Gator, 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 gator.
(singing) Gator, 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 gator.
(singing) Gator, 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 gator.
(singing) Gator, 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 gator.
(singing) Gator, 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 gator.
(singing) Gator, 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 gator.
(singing) Gator, 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 gator.
(singing) Gator, 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 gator.
(singing) Gator, 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 gator.
(singing) Shake that big goose, cause I'm a gator on the door. So, all of my friends, they got to go show. Got a brand new game, we got a new game, so the brand new game, because I'm a gator shuffle. It don't matter, pretty, I'm the go-go. I'm gonna show you how it go. To the right, on the right, to the right, on the right. Hands down, walking beat, body move to the beat. Now shake, now shake, now shake, now shake, now chop it with the whip. Now chop it with the whip. (singing) Gator, 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 gator. (singing) Gator, 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 gator. (singing) Gator, 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 gator. (singing) Gator, 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 gator. (singing) To the right, on the right, to the right, on the right. Hands down, walking beat, body move to the beat. Now shake, now shake, now shake, now shake, now chop it with the whip. Now chop it with the whip. (singing) To the right, on the right, to the right, on the right. Hands down, walking beat, body move to the beat. Now shake, now shake, now shake, now shake, now chop it with the whip. Now chop it with the whip. (singing) Now you see what we're talking about. That's a gator, without a mask, no doubt. We don't stop, yeah, look at that. Give me five, wanna hear us? (singing) Gator, 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 gator.
I do enjoy to break a rainbow for me. I love rainbows.
So, that was done for us last year, and that was done so that we could show a little bit of our pride in our school, in our community. As you can see, we are home to children from across the globe. We have children, we have a low incidence program in our school, and we have speakers that are Portuguese from Angola, from Mozambique, from Portugal, Brazil, all over, and it's really beautiful. We have children that are refugees from Syria, from Afghanistan. We have really, truly, a wonderful cross-section of students in our school. This evening, I'm here tonight also to share with you a very exciting opportunity that we have at the Angelo School. In partnership with Boston College, we have the City Connects Program, and I'm going to share with you a little bit about that program. So, the City Connects Program is something that is offered in all of Boston Public Schools, and it is, it was developed in concert with Boston College. And the idea behind it is with the right support, every student can thrive. So, the research shows that our students have 33% of their quality of in-school experiences, but outside factors are 67%, and that is what impacts achievement. So, the program is to help support making connections for our students, and we're very excited to have a onsite coordinator this year. Her name is Elizabeth O'Brien. She is incredibly talented. She knows our city, she knows our community, she knows our children, and her job this year is to really help make those connections. She will begin this program by identifying and working with teachers to determine students' unique strengths and needs, and in calibration, I'm sorry, in collaboration with our teachers, she will then develop a service plan for every child. She is targeting grades K through 2 and working with family, school, and community agencies. So, we're hoping to enhance some of the partnerships that currently exist, and she's looking at the, getting additional support through programs like the Brockton Promise to use their asset map to really hone in on services and assist in coordinating services that already exist in our agencies. So, this is the beginning of the work, and we're certainly very excited to have Boston College partner with us to begin this exciting journey. And our hope certainly is that if we do a wonderful job with this program and we are able to really impact our students in a positive way, that they will choose to expand this to all schools in Brockton. And we certainly know that we have many deserving families in need that could certainly benefit from increased support. So, that is my short, brief presentation, and I'd just certainly like to let you know again that this is something that we're very, very excited about, and I will be working alongside Liz O'Brien, our City Connects On-Site Coordinator, and my assistant principal, Perry Jacobs, to continue finding some great partnerships that will benefit our student and our schools.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Principal Serpa, for this great presentation tonight. I just wanted to add, you know, the Angelo School is such a warm and inviting school. From the beginning that I started on the school committee, it's been just an absolute pleasure dealing with you and your staff, and they do such an incredible job with the students. And even last year, I still can't forget the, having one of the Celtics players at the school because they were number one in collecting bottles and cans for the city and won a, an appearance by one of the Celtics, and they were, the kids were just so thrilled. I was thrilled to see, and they had Lucky, the mascot, and he did tricks and everything else, so I just wanted to thank you for excellent presentation, and you guys do an excellent job with the kids.
Thank you. We certainly don't do it alone. Mr. Henningson has been a wonderful support to the Angelo School, and you mentioned earlier, Costco did a beautiful job with supporting our schools. Mr. Henningson has also done some really good work, probably behind the scenes. We've received so many donations from drives that he's initiated for school supplies... We've received so many, um, donations from drives that he's initiated for school supplies for our students. And yes, you know, they, it fosters, you know, independence and organization. And kids really, um, having backpacks and supplies in the beginning of the year really sets them off for a great year. So, um, all of your work has certainly been very appreciated. I saw you, I saw you.
I was listening to you. Just to the right, to your right. I was waiting for the left, to the left. You turn yourself around. And I'm sitting here almost doing the dance. So, tell them very good. I love that interpretation. They have a rendition, excellent.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for a great presentation. Um, your kids certainly look like they do enjoy being part of the Angelo School. And it's evident in, in your, um, in your video. Uh, as far as the City Connects, is that a new program this year?
It is. It is a brand-new program for us this year.
And it works with every child from K to two?
Right now, it will begin every child from K to two.
And how many children does that represent approximately?
Approximately four hundred children. We have almost nine hundred children at the Angelo. Uh, but we have a caseload of four hundred for the city coordinator.
And how is it coordinated with the parents?
This is the beginning phase. And what initially happens is the data collection where the, uh, onsite coordinator meets with each of the teachers. And they go over the entire class to do a, uh, a review, to discuss with them, um, what needs students may have. And when we have children, and again, it's not only specific need, it could also be for enrichment purposes. So, if we find a student who is, you know, so intrigued by art, part of, um, this cali- I can't do it, collaboration, will possibly include work with the Fuller Art Museum to connect that child with some, perhaps some enrichment opportunities. So, that's what we're looking for. Uh, so again, it will definitely be working with, you know, community service agencies and so forth. She will be coordinating that. But it's also going to be bringing in some of our families. For example, we have, you know, as, as you're aware, I'm sure, we have families who experience homelessness and may need support in certain areas. And our hope is to really make those connections for the families.
How do parents become partners in this process?
The initial phase is the data collection. And once that is started, then the, or finished, rather, the, um, onsite coordinator, Ms. O'Brien, will communicate and reach out, uh, to the families.
Directly?
Directly.
So, how, how are the parents informed about this process? And, and right now, she's probably a stranger to them, I would imagine.
Well, she, um, has been with us for many years. Uh, she's very well-known to our families. Uh, the students know her, our families know her. Um, she has always been in our guidance department. Uh, but now her, her role has changed a bit here.
She already has a relationship with many of the families.
She certainly does. That's what made her an ideal candidate for this role.
That's great. Well, I'm really excited about this. I'd like to, to know how that progresses as you go through the year. And is this something you expect that will last through the school year and then possibly into next school year following these kids? As they go into second and third grade?
We have a big commitment. Uh, and we're really excited about the partnership with Boston College, where I did go to school. So, I'm very excited to have B.C. backing this program. And they are committed to us for three years. And again, if we do a beautiful job, which I fully expect to, um, and if we see some great impact to our students, um, that I hope to come back and, and share that information with you as the year progresses.
That is, it's a super program. It sounds awesome. And I applaud you for bringing that program to your school. It's really great.
Thank you.
I just again want to make a comment. When we bring the schools before you, I think it's very evident to each one of us. And I invite you, uh, to any one of the schools. When you walk in there, you understand what it is to be part of the Angelo School or an Angelo Gator, whether it's your special needs kids that are there, whether it's your talented and gifted students, your gen ed students, your students that are here, as you can see, from all over the world. You know, for the first time, you generally feel a part of what's happening at the Angelo. And more importantly, we continue to talk about the services we offer for students. This is not a place where students come, you know, for six or seven hours a day. You know, the outreach to the parents, to the families is huge, certainly in our districts and in education, I think, all over our country right now. So, so to have this kind of a support, as we said, to connect families to everything from socialization for kids, enrichment and recreation, counseling services if needed, social service agencies. You're really supporting the parents to the point that the teachers can concentrate on that education, which is so critical, uh, for the success of our students. So, this is a program, we've talked about it. I know Dr. Torasi has been deeply involved in this for a number of years. A lot of it is about funding. So, when we're able to have these opportunities, and it will be a success, we continue to look for ways to replicate these best practices throughout the district. So, we're keenly aware of, you know, our own budget and looking for all of these support services, again, from grants or, or support from foundations to make this happen.
I think also the beauty of City Connects is it closely aligns with our school improvement, uh, school improvement program, our, our own understanding of the whole child, how we are doing, you know, with respect to the strategic plan for the city, looking at, um, family engagement and community resources. I think it really closely aligns with all of those things. And that's really a beautiful piece. When you can make connections all across, I think that's where it sticks and it makes most sense. So, again, with, you know, trauma-sensitive supports, with PBIS, with a lot of what we're currently doing, I think it complements it beautifully. And I'm very excited about it.
So, this becomes our strategic plan coming alive. And we're very, very pleased right now. Uh, Deputy Superintendent Barry, her team, uh, working with the principals on making sure that their school improvement plans, you know, are matching our district strategic plan. So, to hear you talk about goal number three.
Yes.
The big rock is, is really important to, to see this work continuing. As we said, it is not going to be something that collects dust. It's very much happening in the district.
Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you.
And tonight, we're also welcoming, uh, Principal Kevin Caro from Self Middle School. Again, the home of the Dragons. Um, another school, you walk in there, you very much feel the spirit as you walk through that school. You feel welcome. Every child is welcome. A little bit different than the Angelo, but I'm gonna let Principal Caro talk to you about Self Middle School. And another PowerPoint.
Another PowerPoint with the video at the end. All right. Thanks for having me. My name's Kevin Caro. I'm the principal over at Self Middle School. As Kathy said, we have been the Dragons for a while since I've been over there. Um, and one of the things that is evident to the students and the, um, staff and the parents when you walk through the door, they know exactly what's expected of them. We show this to our students opening day. We have posters around it. And it's our vision statement for what we hope to accomplish in the three years that they're there. So, I'll give you a minute to read through that. Okay, and all those things are so important, uh, for our middle school kids. I mean, to get them academically proficient at grade level, but also to learn how to be members of our community, uh, to be respectful to one another. And last but not least, we want them to be healthy, not only when they leave us, but for the rest of their life. So, we really push exercise and eating healthy. And there's some other things in here that we're going to share with you that, um, we really emphasize in the whole child. One of the things that we came up with ten years ago, this is actually our tenth year as a middle school. We were the first one, uh, when we came aboard in two thousand and six. And when we designed the school, uh, we really didn't have a blueprint. We just basically came up with the philosophy. We wanna make these seven and a half hours a day the best part of a kid's day. And everything that we do, um, back then, and even as we make changes now, is, is, goes hand-in-hand with our philosophy. Um, we use data to drive our instruction. Our staff is constantly looking at, um, ways to improve. Um, one of the things that we're very proud of is that third bullet down there. We were, and I, I find this surprising. We were the first middle school in the whole state of Massachusetts to adopt breakfast in the classroom. Um, and it's still going strong. It's led by the kids. The kids are responsible for delivering breakfast, for collecting it, for taking attendance. Um, and we feed more kids now than we ever did. We used to feed maybe a hundred if we're lucky. And now we're close to four hundred students that get breakfast every single day at no expense to us. So, that's something that we're really proud of, and I wanna continue that. Um, and thank you Superintendent Smith for, you know, giving us the opportunity to do that because it does make such a big difference. Uh, the other thing that we're really proud of is we get to expose our kids to science, hands-on science projects. We have a state-of-the-art science lab that the Galvin family, um, funded for us, uh, five years ago. And it, it just adds a whole new element to our science classes that we never had before. And now the kids are able to actually see and conduct experiments and write about what, what's happening there. Um, as far as the TVs go, it doesn't seem like a big deal. But for teenagers, when they go to lunch, being able to put on SportsCenter or the News or Nickelodeon, whatever it may be, just makes that thirty minutes that they're down there with their friends that more enjoyable. And we also have an outdoor dining area where if, when the weather's nice, the kids go outside and eat. And when we have extra time at the end of the lunch, we, once again, let them run around. We give them footballs to use. We promote that fitness. So, those little things may not seem like a lot, but the kids really do appreciate everything that we do for them. Um, our schedule at the middle schools is something that allows us to meet every single day. And I think that that flexibility allows the staff and our Associate Principal to work with the teachers on all these following things, you know, collaboration and going over best practices, lesson planning, and given an opportunity to meet with parents. I mean, we meet with parents, you know, every single week. We have parents that come in. Um, and it's just a, it's just a nice thing that we have embedded in the schedule. One initiative that we are, um, moving forward with this year is mindset. And I know that we had a, uh, district-wide presentation that Mrs. Barry was responsible for. Um, but this is something that we've been working on at our school for four years. Uh, we are working with the students and the staff to get kids from, that may have a fixed mindset, that they can't learn certain things, they may have struggled with some subjects before, to get them out of their comfort zone, to be, be okay with, you know, falling, falling down and failing, and just getting them to, to overcome some obstacles that they have. And it's just changing how they think about their schoolwork. And, and this whole mindset piece is, um, it, it's something that you need to see to really appreciate it. We have posters around, we use the language of using growth mindset. And I honestly feel that something like this is gonna pay off big dividends for us, um, as we move forward. The other thing that we're really excited about, this is the first year that we've done this, is a concept called mindfulness. Um, it's not anything new. And Dr. Torasi and I have spoken about this many times. It allows students, and we teach them how to meditate, which doesn't sound like, oh, you may not believe in it, you may not be familiar with it. But for a lot of our kids, just being able to just sit in a quiet place with guided meditation, and you can't see the link there. There's, there's a link that we use. It's called Smiling Mind. It is a free program that we have that gives, uh, daily guided mindfulness. So, we start our sustained silent reading at the end of the day, where the teachers put on the mindfulness, they shut the lights off. And the students have gotten into the habit of, they come in, they kinda, just kinda shut everything off, and then they transition into sustained silent reading. And we, we see the benefit immediately. I was talking with Sal, uh, earlier. A lot of times, kids come down to the office, they're having a bad day, something happened in class, and they, they're all worked up. A lot of times, what we'll do is we'll just put them in the office, we'll put the mindfulness on. I said, hey, we'll be back in five minutes, we'll talk. And within that five minutes, they've calmed down, we can talk to them. So, once again, this is something that we hope that they can take with them when they leave, um, from middle school to high school and as they become adults. All right? This is something that I just really feel strongly about. And, uh, I hope to report back to you, I mean, at some point, to just let you know how, uh, how it goes. This here, Skills for Life, uh, this is a program that we initiated eight years ago. Can't believe it's been that long. But we have time built in our schedule on Friday afternoons in which all of our teachers are involved, they co-teach lessons. Um, and some of the topics are, are up there. And it's a lot of things that aren't covered necessarily in class, some things that aren't talked about at home. And this is a class that's just all about them. Uh, they get to share, we know what's going on, they get to work on some strategies. Um, and it also allows us time on Friday afternoons to bring guest speakers. We have speakers that have talked about opioid abuse. Uh, we had people come in to perform for us, just, you know, music. Um, theater companies have come in. And it's just a nice way to end our week. Uh, the students have responded very well, and the teachers have as well. I mean, they've really taken pride in how they go about their classes, they plan their lessons together. And, uh, we, we've just seen just a, a, a nice culture change from where we started ten years ago to where we are today. And I honestly feel that this is a big piece of it. One thing that we're really excited about, and this just started a couple of years ago, Bridgewater State gave us an opportunity to continue on what the Huntington School started with the Footbridge Program. And they said to me, hey, Kev, do you wanna send thirty kids to Bridgewater State over the summer? I'm like, yeah. So, we've invited, this is the second year we've done this, but we've invited thirty-five students to go over to Bridgewater State. They take care of everything. And the response from the parents and from the kids has just been tremendous. I mean, the students that come back as eighth graders, hey, when can we go back? When are Mark and Jill, the people who run the program, when are they coming to visit us? And it just, it just gives them an experience. For example, a couple of kids sign up for aviation, they get to fly to Nantucket in, in the Bridgewater State plane, something that they probably will never have an opportunity to do again. Some of them get to work on a crime lab, part of the forensics program. So, Bridgewater has been very generous in allowing our students to go there. And I hope that that's going to continue for some, for some time. This here is something that we put in place about four years ago with the help of Dan Vigian and the Technology Department. This is our auditorium. And this is where we start our day. We have all the students that come in. Uh, we show news clips, we show videos. Uh, and this is just a nice way, again, for the students to start their day before they go to breakfast. And this, this is really state-of-the-art. We have surround sound, we have the H.D.TVs on the wall washes, we have, um, wireless microphone system. So, when we do have presentations and our guests, this is what they get to use. And I, I know that the parents and, and the students really appreciate that. And once again, this is what, this is what's good for kids. What's next? You're gonna have a short video, and that, that'll wrap everything up. You're going to see all those things. You may see a picture of me in a chef coat and go, what, what's that doing in there? I do like to cook. And once a year, twice a year, I will prepare lunch for the entire school. Uh, tomorrow is one of those days. So, I'm making sausage cacciatore. If anybody would like to come by. Lunch starts at ten forty-five. I know a little early for sausage cacciatore. But this is something, um, that I love to do. And you'll just see in the video, students genuinely, uh, genuinely liking coming to school. They enjoy coming here. It's so great when they come back to see us. We've had kids from college and sophomore that wanna come back and see my teachers because I honestly feel that we do a great job building relationships with kids and families. And you will see that in a moment. Hopefully, if this wants to play for me. Those are our breakfast ambassadors. Well, that's it. I just want to thank you again for giving me an opportunity to come up here. And I also, hey, I'm here, but I would not, this would not be possible without my great team. I got Joe Parfitt as our assistant principal, Chris Olason as our associate, an unbelievable staff, and that's what makes it work. So thank you. Any questions?
What did the Bridgewater program, has there been any follow-up on how many of the students may have gone on to college that participated?
Well, I, this is only our second year, so the kids that I have now are just freshmen.
Right, okay.
So I'm hoping that we can continue this. I think that, after talking with Fred Clark and with Mark and with Jill, they, they want to continue this as long as, as possible.
I'm glad to see that aviation program is working. I had some involvement with that before even to get it into Bridgewater, probably about 15 years ago, so.
Okay. I'm telling you, the kids, they were so excited when they came back. I'm like, so what did you do? We flew to Nantucket. I said, I haven't flown to Nantucket. Come on. Yeah.
That's great.
Ten years, huh?
Ten years.
Already, my gosh.
Crazy, I know.
I remember the old South, and I gotta tell you, you walked into a tough situation when you started there, I remember. And under your leadership, you've just totally transformed the culture of that school. And it, I can't believe what you've brought to that school.
Thank you.
And just seeing the, the efforts you put in in, in helping this very difficult age group. You know, this is a scary time for these kids. And I remember being in middle school, and it wasn't easy. I can only imagine what it's like today. So, and just the little things you're doing, they're really big, though. You know, giving them a chance to blow off steam at lunch, you know, giving them an opportunity to throw footballs around, to have the TVs, to have a real life in school, you know, that they can be, they could see what's going on in the world as well, and giving them that opportunity to have a little bit of quiet time and, you know, just really, you know, educating the whole child and thinking about the whole child. And you're really preparing them for that next step into high school.
We hope so. And like I've always said, I'm a 13-year-old that's trapped in a 47-year-old body. So I do, I think like a 13-year-old a lot, and like, everything that we do is what's in the best interest, but thank you.
Well, what you've done in that school is phenomenal.
Thank you.
And we're very lucky to have your leadership and the rest of the leadership in, in your school. You have a great, great team.
Yeah, we do, we really do.
Wish you a lot of success.
But thank you.
It's been really great to see what you're doing there.
Thank you.
Privilege of being invited last year to South. I told Mr. Cairo that I had never stepped foot in South Middle School ever in my whole life, and I've been in the city my whole life, so he invited me there. It's a very nice feeling when you walk into that school. It's a very warm place, and you could tell that the kids feel comfortable and safe. And I think that his staff enjoy being there. So if the staff enjoy being there, you know that that translates into a good environment for students. So you are doing a great job there.
Thank you.
Your building is immaculate. I was very impressed with the condition of the school itself in terms of the cleanliness. It's extremely clean.
Yeah, the custodians do a great job, and the students also take care of it. I mean, we don't have a traditional office detention for kids who get in trouble. We have what we call community service. So if they do end up having to stay after school, we have them help out. They pick up trash around the neighborhood, they help clean up the auditorium. So once again, just a little thing, they leave, we give them a thank you for cleaning up, we start fresh tomorrow, so that, that has helped us quite a bit. Where they actually take care of their own building.
And I would also mention that, you know, we hear so many positive and good things about the high school, but, you know, everything builds on itself, and, you know, we can't overlook what's happening at the elementary and the middle schools in order to be those building, those important building blocks for what can take place at the high school. So the whole district is, you know, running on all cylinders, I think, and people are doing a good job at every level, so.
Well, thank you again for letting me come out tonight. Have a good evening.
So before you leave, a couple of things, again, about South Middle School. You know, we're all pretty perceptive to see that it's a great place to be. And I want to thank the principal because when you do talk about things as simple as breakfast in the classroom, again, it's important for the overall child, it makes a difference in what that school day is all about. And more importantly, I think the things that we saw, you know, in the video or just being there, and invite anybody to come and see what's happening, when you're in those classrooms with the teaching, there's a lot of energy. You know, you can walk in, there's a lot of dialogue back and forth between the teachers, best practices. And I think this also speaks to that opportunity for our teachers. And I know we're trying as school committee to make sure we give that type of a schedule to every one of our teachers in the district. And it is going to be a long haul here, but you've started that work, you know, I compliment you on that. We have Kim Gibson and our Brockton Education Association. We've come together to give that kind of an opportunity where every day you see that teachers have an opportunity to look at data, talk about lessons, those that were successful, those that might have failed. How can we look at things differently? How do we deal with disciplining of students, connections with parents? All of those things are good dialogue. And unfortunately, when we built schools or built schedules for some reason, we didn't think of that long ago. I never had those opportunities, and it makes for very, very strong teaching. So when I'm walking around and you see all of those things that felt good about that video, there's also excellent teaching, innovation, you know, just wonderful things happening itself. So thank you for all you do. I know Central Office took note of the time, we'll be over there tomorrow for lunch. We don't often get a lunch break, so we'll be there for sausage cacciatore.
Sausage cacciatore.
I'm Italian, I haven't heard of sausage cacciatore, Mr. Minichello.
Well, I was just going to say that before Mr. Cairo leaves, I think that you probably need that recipe.
You mean, I need a cooking lesson?
Ah, wow, I'm not going to say that. Mr. Cairo, can you just tell me a little bit more about the Smiling Mind Meditation Program and what that entails?
Yeah, the mindfulness is, like I said, it's just a nice way for kids to, really what it teaches kids is to just focus on what, the moment that they're in. And it may focus on breathing, simple as just kind of feeling your breath and listening to the sounds, just to kind of shut off everything else that may be going on, worried about what's going on at home, worried about what happened in your last class, what am I going to, where am I going to do my homework? And it really just has the kids kind of slow down, and they just kind of shut their mind off for five minutes, focus just on themselves. And this is something that's been used by, I mean, world-class athletes. I mean, Michael Jordan, Kobe Bryant, professional golfers, Jason Day, I don't know if you're familiar with him, the golfer. He's a big subscriber of mindfulness, where he actually tries to visualize what he wants to do. And it just kind of goes hand in hand with the whole mindset and the other things that we have in place. And Smiling Mind is the app that will take you through guided meditation. And you slowly start from beginning stage where it's five minutes, to the point where you become an expert meditator, will be a 10-minute session. And it doesn't cost us a dime.
How long has it been since you introduced that into the school?
This is our first year.
Okay. So, so you started it in September?
We started it opening day, first day of school.
And you see results so far?
Yeah, I'm telling you, it's probably the most, to just see it in action, when we, like I said, when you have a kid in the office that's having a bad day and he's having a tough time calming down, and we put him in my office, shut the lights off, and just have him go through the meditation, five minutes later, you wouldn't believe it's the same kid.
So obviously, you find it effective. Is it something that can be shared with, you know, other middle schools?
I know Dr. Tarasi and I have spoken, where are you, Sal?
And even elementary schools.
We actually, we actually are doing a lot of professional development in that area because it seems good to teachers, it's a great self-approaching strategy, teachers, and teachers practicing, then it passes on to their children. And it really ties into self-regulation of emotions, focusing stress reduction. The medical expert is Dr. John Cabot-Zinn from U.S. Medical Center. And he's done a tremendous amount of work, research, and publication in using this for stress reduction. And he obviously gives adolescents a stress-promoting, so it teaches children to be in control of their own, their own sense of well-being. And it's a self-management technique that just has a lot of, and a growing volume of critical effort to support it.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, Tom, I would say the, the only way that I came across this, it was on 60 Minutes back in July, where John Cabot-Zinn did a whole feature with Anderson Cooper from CNN. And I kind of looked at it, I said, well, let me, let me do some more research, and Sal and I talked, and now we've implemented it. If you go to YouTube, I would, if you just want to get a little more information about it, that would, it's probably a 15-minute clip, but it kind of explains the whole concept and how it works.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a great, you know, tool. And, you know, it's something that we've talked about, that we need the schools to share practices that are effective in one building and another building. So, you know, I would just simply reinforce that this sounds like something that may be beneficial to more than one site, and, you know, even if it's adaptable to the elementary level, I mean, whatever's age-appropriate, and if it's something that, you know, could benefit one facility and another facility, we should be, we should be talking amongst ourselves because there's so many good things that I think happen in our schools in Brockton. But the buildings need to share with one another so that we can get more bang for the buck. And this is just another great tool that I think, you know, I would like shared throughout the district so that we, you know, can offer it to more than just the kids itself. But this is great, you know, this is the stuff that makes Brockton so unique, you know?
And these are the reasons we have the schools come before you. You know, again, we talk about what's happening district-wide, but we want you to see some of the things happening in the individual schools. And I will assure you that, again, when Dr. Murray meets with the, you know, principals at the middle school level, or June Saban-Maguire meets with her team with the elementary principals, these are the kinds of things that they're doing, they're highlighting, they're showcasing, they're talking about, in professional development on their own. It isn't just the teachers, when I talk about a schedule that allows it. The principals get together and that, meetings are not happening where we're just talking about the checkoff system of what we need them to do in the district. They're the ones driving the professional development. So I'm not sure if you've already shared that, but I can bet Dr. Murray, when he meets with your group, it is the sharing of best practices.
Great. Thanks again. Excellent. Mr. George?
Yes. I'm intrigued by community service instead of detention. I think it's a great idea. That's another one of these things I think that could work. Is that what you do in your school as a total, or you still have detention also?
We have, if teachers need to keep a kid after school, they, we would definitely have that be the first option. But if a student's sent down to the office, we usually use the community service piece, and it's, it's worked out really, really well. I mean, fall, we have leaves that need to be raked, give a kid a chance to go outside. And once again, they give back, they come back the next day, see everything's cleaned up, we tell them what a nice job they did. And that, to me, is more beneficial than having them sit in an auditorium for 30 minutes. They leave angry, I took time out of the day, they give something back, so it works for us.
Do you have something written up about that, or is just...
No, it's just, just something that we do.
Too bad. Here's another one of those things that the sharing needs to be done, because that's another piece that we could use probably across the whole district at all levels. But how do you put it together? I mean, because somebody's looking for a way to, to implement that. So there might be some homework that we may ask you to do at some point, if possible, so. That's something we really need as an alternative to some of the ways that we deal with some of our students, so.
I'd be more than glad to.
Excellent.
Anyone else? Good, great, thanks, Mr. Cairo. All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I would like to update you on a couple of issues. Let me start with the charter school hearings. Last Tuesday, I have to think of the dates, it was right after the Columbus holiday, there was a hearing in Boston. And the hearing in Boston at the State House was about a bill put forward, or a number of bills, looking to raise the cap on charter schools. Many of us were involved certainly in our own debate last year about the value of a charter school in Brockton. I made sure I was present at these hearings, I did not have an opportunity to speak, they started at 10:00 in the morning, I got there a few minutes after because of rain and traffic, which is a nightmare, driving into Boston in the rain. But also, they went till 5:00 in the afternoon, and you can imagine, you know, the type of comments that were made, everything from support of raising the cap, Governor Baker was certainly one of the first people to speak, and also a discussion about the bill, the Pacico bill. So I would like to talk just a little bit about that. When you look at the Pacico bill, it's calling for a moratorium right now on any Commonwealth charter schools. And what makes sense about that, and philosophically, I feel very, very strongly about this, that there is very, very little evidence out there about the difference with a Commonwealth charter and what they have been able to do for children and our public school system. And philosophically, a public school system with taxpayer dollars, with oversight by an elected board such as a school committee, is very, very different than a charter school being given a charter for five years, not accounting for those taxpayer dollars in the way that we have to, and not being accountable to an elected board. That being said, I thought it was very interesting when Senator Pacico talked about, and many of us were around in 1993 when Ed Reform came in. And one of the things he reminded everybody, he spoke after the governor, was back when Ed Reform came in, one of the compromises was about charters coming into our state. And in order to authorize a charter at the time, and a Commonwealth charter, he talked about it being a compromise because back then, they were talking about a voucher system, which was, again, happening across the country. And not everybody has an educational system certainly like we do here in our state. And he talked about giving 25 Commonwealth charters or charters as part of this compromise. Presently, I believe we have 71 charters that have been given throughout the state. And he talked about, again, it was supposed to be an idea because of autonomies that a charter school might have, that a public school did not, it was going to be the sharing of best practices. And quite honestly, the debate has been very, very divisive, as we saw here in our own community last year. So a couple of takeaways from me. Another thing that happened was our state auditor, Suzanne Bump, who is actually a classmate of mine from high school, was not able to give testimony personally that day in person, but she did send something, and I found it very intriguing. And what she basically has said in weighing in, again, is it is a philosophical difference. And one of the things that she stated loud and clear is there is very little or no evidence that really shows there is a difference between what a charter school can offer and what a public school can offer, other than some of the negative things that are happening as we talked about, we saw the kind of dialogue that happened in our own district. But more importantly, she talks about the best practices. And what she said, and I thought this was interesting, and I hope the message was loud and clear to the lawmakers in the State House. She talked about, one of the things that there is evidence about is extended learning time. A number of the charters have implemented extended learning time in their schools. And we know here in Brockton, with our Huntington School, and now we're looking at our Raymond School, by virtue of being given money, or the support from the school committee, which was additional money back when we had it a number of years ago, we have seen a difference in those children spending that additional time dedicated to instruction, it has made a difference in their accountability status. And those are the kind of things that she talked about. If, in fact, you have data and evidence, which she says is very little from the research that she has done, then those are things that we should be talking about. And if we believe in it, then that's where the state should be putting their money in giving extended learning time to places like the children in the Brockton Public Schools. So I found it very interesting. I will continue to stay abreast of this and to keep you informed. to stay abreast of this and to keep you informed, as well as the public. You do know that there has been a charter prospectus, New Heights Charter, which was very similar to the charter school put forth last year. I've spoken to Omari Walker, the president of New Resiliency Foundation, who is heading up this prospectus for the charter school. And I have been very, very clear with him again, about my philosophical difference in what is happening with charters. We will look at the debate that happens in Brockton, and we will be taking a position on this this year.
Okay. Anyone else on that issue?
Outside of the pending legislation or the proposed legislation, there's also pending ballot measure. So it might all be legislatively moot. If folks can collect enough signatures, the cap question could go to the voters. And, you know, the ease of the argument for charters, you know, I mean, it's a very kind of, it's just, they're very convincing in many ways. You know, I mean, we saw them out at laundromats last year, promising college education, you know, for everyone who signed up. And those kinds of, and there's a certain appeal to that. And so there's, there are some other fronts where this battle might take place. And I think yesterday, I read an article by the Pioneer Institute, our friends over there, who suggested that potentially, the Lawrence School District could come out of receivership and into charter as a district, as a solution to state receivership, leveraging, I don't know, the awesomeness of charters. And I just think, those types of conversations are pretty scary to me, as it relates to the value of public education and the original intent of public education in general. Just turn whole districts over to charters after receivership would be scary.
I think we have so much faith, you look at what we put forward here. We don't have failing schools in the city of Brockton. We have schools that are very successful. We know what the best practices are. We know what we need to support our students. We just need to make sure we have that proper funding. We're not afraid of competition. You know, one of the things that I will say, when you talk about choice, there is choice. You know, even school choice was adopted. There are some parents that select some of the neighboring district. There are other parents that select for what we offer, the Brockton Public School District. Those are taxpayer dollars with oversight, just like us are here in the city of Brockton, with school boards that have oversight of spending of taxpayer dollars. So we are not a failing school district, when you look at the districts such as Lawrence. But I am very, very concerned during these tough budget times and financial times, of making sure that the dollars that we have are spent for the type of education that we not only offer. But when you also look at the type of evidence, it would be one thing to say, again, and there's evidence out there about certain students that are selected for charter schools. You want to truly look at that kind of an experiment in Brockton, that when people come through the registration center, they should be registered to a charter or registered to the Brockton Public Schools. That would clearly be the same kinds of students. So, you know, that discussion, no one is ever going to win with the kind of discussion. When I sat there for hours last Tuesday, you know, I'm not sure who the winners here are. But there's got to, at some point, I do think the moratorium, which means to take a step back before we increase seats, or increase the number of charters, and really start to take a look at that data, and comparing apples to apples, and not apples to oranges. So it's, it's very frustrating, I think, on this end. And again, we want the best education for all of our students. We think choice is great, and not one size fits all. And again, when you see different presentations here, you talk about our alternative pathways in the city, we understand that. Every child is important to us. And we understand that, again, one size doesn't fit all.
Anyone else? Okay.
And again, I also would like to talk about a couple of things on Park. Today, they have started to release statewide data on Park. And I read an editorial, and I can't remember which newspaper it was in, but one of the things, again, that was frustrating was, a comment was made that there were 54% of the districts in the state that have already chosen Park. So I want to make sure that the public understands, last year, when we made that choice, it was a one-year choice that was given throughout the Commonwealth. You had a choice of staying with MCAS or trying out Park. The year previous, we actually had trials that happened in the district that we had no choice on. And we actually administered both Park and MCAS. So we chose Park for a lot of reasons. One reason that we chose it was, they would be making a decision, as they're going to be making in the next month or so, about the decision about Park. We wanted to make sure that our students had an opportunity to see it. And we, as a district, had an opportunity to see the administration, look at the technology piece. Obviously, we did both technology and paper and pencil, because we weren't able to do the technology throughout the district. So interesting, the commissioner came out today, and it's been interesting, when we talk about Park here, one of the things that I have said to you each and every time is, when they make this decision, I guarantee you that it will not be, if they choose MCAS, it will not be the MCAS that we have known. There will be another version. And certainly today, I thought it was interesting, when the commissioner came out and talked about, the decision going forward might not be just a Park decision or an MCAS decision. But it might be taking some of the best things that they learn about Park, a new generation of testing, aligned with Common Core, which is what we're teaching in the schools, and coming up with another version of MCAS. So I thought that was really interesting, which is exactly what we had talked about, and making sure then, that when this decision is made, if they do make a decision to go forward with a new MCAS with Park-like questions, I'm glad we had that opportunity to take a look at it as a district. I want to invite Dr. Cancel up here. He's been busy. He came to see me just before I left for school committee. And I think it's interesting, there's a couple of things that are coming out. And as information comes out, I want to keep you abreast of what is happening. But I asked him to share with you some of his comments about looking at taking paper and pencil versus the computer. And I want to remind everybody that one of the surveys that they did at the end was asking students how they felt about the technology piece, the computer piece. And I came back and said to Dr. Cancel, "It's what I thought. The students enjoy taking the test using the computer." But he's going to share some interesting information with you.
I'm going to say right now, I don't have a PowerPoint or a video. Liz isn't here to dance, so, but I will try and be brief. One thing that I really enjoy about working in Brockton is Brockton has always had an evidence-based approach. Try something out, look at what the evidence is, research it before you try it out. So, you know, you may look at Kevin's mindfulness as a little bit wacky, but I can guarantee you, the people who he's referencing, Cabot-Zin, Dr. Wile, Richard Davidson, these are all Harvard, you know, doctors who have a ton of evidence about meditation. But here we go. Park, you know, I think the superintendent said it very well. We wanted to actually see it for ourselves in real, live time, and see what it would take if the state decided to go in that direction. And I want to give you just some evidence, so you can tell people. These are some of the things that we learned. We talk about the amount of schools, or the amount of, the percentage of students or districts that took Park or not. There were, I have to take off my glasses to read these figures. There were 165 students last year who chose to take MCAS. There were 194 who chose to take Park. So that just lets you know that we were in a slight majority. The other thing that's interesting to note, just to sort of keep in the back of your mind, there was all this press by some very loud, noisy people about opt-out. And the commissioner would say, "There is no opt-out. We've made a deal in Massachusetts. For all the money that the legislature gave us, they give us accountability. And part of accountability is our state test. There is no opting out for anyone." And so with all this hype, it was just that. 98% of the students in the state took Park. 98%. Most states don't do that. Now, you could say, "Well, you know, it's not quite as good as MCAS." No, it isn't. 99% of the kids who took MCAS, you know, were scheduled to take it, took it. 99% and 98% is phenomenal. So, once again, do not believe the hype. Now, some more interesting, fresh off the presses, we know nothing about our performance in Brockton. They have not released anything about that. But we do know a little bit now about the state. They just released it today. It turns out that if you take the paper-based test, you have a clear advantage in Park over the computer-based test. And so while you may have heard, kids reported really enjoying taking the test, enjoyment of taking a test does not necessarily equate to performance on the test. I'm not personally interested in the enjoyment factor. I am very interested in how well the test measures the student's mastery of the material that was taught. And so there is a very clear, very clear difference. It's roughly speaking, you'll learn more about this later when I do the big Park presentation, without the dancing video, but with bad jokes. Thank you, Andy. Park has levels, 1 through 5. We're used to 1 through 4, and we're used to the nomenclature of warning, needs improvement, proficient, advanced. Park is 1 through 5. The bottom line here is, when you look at the preliminary MCAS, not MCAS, Park with computer-based only, 13% of the third graders scored in Level 1. You don't want to do that. But when you have this new and improved, everyone who takes the test, only 10% are there. And that's pretty common. There's about a three percentage point difference. Comparing, and remember this, that's comparing just computer to computer and paper. So if you compared, which I can't do because I don't know the figures, if you just looked at the computer and just looked at the paper, you'd see a very large difference. What the state itself would call statistically significant or meaningful. So there is that difference. The other thing that's worth noting, I'm not going to go into a huge presentation here. When you do compare the state MCAS results to the just-released Park results, with the exception of 4th grade, you see a very large difference between the percentage of students scoring proficient or higher on MCAS, or meeting or exceeding expectations in Park. So the roughly equivalent. And what you basically see is, there's six percentage points less in 3rd grade in ELA. There are 15 percentage points less in 3rd grade math. So think about that. It is a much more challenging test for that grade level. 4th grade is weird. 4th grade, it's actually easier for MCAS in ELA, and it's the same for math. 5th grade, it's an eight-point and a 12-point difference. And again, this is always saying that MCAS is, there are higher percentage of kids scoring proficient and advanced. 11 points in 6th grade, 9 points for math, 10 points in 7th grade, 16 points in 8th grade. You get the picture. So when those results come out, it'll be very interesting to see. I will point out that, as part of the enticement to try something, the state said, because they did not know how the test was going to perform, they said, "We will hold you harmless." So it was, it was a very good idea to see what the test looked like. And now, here are some of my sort of conclusions. There are two ways to look at this paper-based being, the results being better than the computer-based. One is to say, "Oh, jeez, our kids aren't ready for it. We'd better have them do paper-based." The other, complete opposite way to look at it is, you know, as much as I personally like paper, that is last century's technology. Are we really preparing our students, and I don't mean in Brockton only, I mean in the state of Massachusetts, are we preparing our students for the future? And when you see that big of a difference, I think you know how to answer that question. And there have been other states, Maryland comes to mind, that have really made serious investments at the state level for technology, not relying on mom and dad to supply the greatest technology. But this is public education. This is the level playing field. This is, everyone shows up with the same opportunity. It's a real opportunity for the state. I hope that the state is able to interpret the data in that way. We'll see. And it's going to be very interesting to see how we did in Brockton, and what differences we see. And maybe I'll take up meditation, and it'll help me through those things. So if you have any questions, those are the very preliminary state results.
I have a quick one for you. So basically, the bottom line is, the kids that took the paper and pencil Park performed higher than the kids that took the computer-based model, even though they enjoyed the computer-based model more. But when you think about it, yeah, we do live in a technology-driven world. All of us in our work lives are on the computer all day long, and this and that. But just by going through the process, well, paper and pencil is going to be a slower process, just because of the mechanics of it. And just going through that process of the mechanics in a slower fashion, does it give them more time to think about their answer, as opposed to answering on a computer, so they could catch themselves, and the thought process is different. And has there been any discussion about the mechanics of doing it that way, as opposed to answering more quickly on the computer model?
It's a great point, and...
I always know that, when I was in college, granted, we weren't sitting with laptops because they didn't exist.
Right.
Okay, I'm aging myself here. But I know that when I wrote things down, I did much better on my exams.
Sure.
And that was a common thing. Whether or not writing it down, is that taking away our learning process?
Yeah. No, it's, it's a great point. And if you ask the Office of Teaching and Learning, you know, we were out there every single day when Park was being given. I mean, every day, every session. And that's why I said, "I don't care what the kids are reporting. I saw exactly that." Switch, switch, switch. You know, hey, it's great. It's a touchscreen, and I'm done.
But even though we, we know our kids need to live with technology, but are we giving up something in the process?
I think that, I think it doesn't have to be neither or. I think as people become more familiar with things, it, like you, I'm most comfortable with paper and pencil. I work on a computer all day long. I'm taking notes, paper and pencil. As the technology itself becomes better and easier to use, as the test becomes easier to use, these are all things, the best part about, and what I hope to remind everybody, the best part about assessments in Massachusetts, until high school and graduation requirement, it doesn't count. There is no penalty to the student. We care a ton about it as a school district. But to the student, there is no penalty. It is a learning opportunity.
Right.
That is what it should be seen as, is a chance to see, are we effective in our instruction of the standards? So if we're not, guess what? We have an opportunity to get better. That's the whole growth mindset that, you know, South talked about, that Marcia talks about. That's what we look at. So to me, I think it's a really good opportunity for us. It's a valid point. It's a growth opportunity. Going forward, if they were to make a decision that commits the state to a certain amount of time, I think we could make an informed decision. Right now, we still don't know. But when we do know, this time, we will have the opportunity to make a decision that's going to count, and it will count for some years. So we'll have better information. Good point, though.
Thank you.
Surprised that students did better at MCAS than Park, where we've been preparing for MCAS for so many years? I mean, that's just common sense, that the people were not going to, the kids were not going to do as well as Park, because teachers haven't prepared kids for Park. People, teachers didn't know really the ins and outs of Park. So to me, if kids did better at Park, it would tell me that Park is a weaker test than MCAS. So that, you know, it really makes sense that the kids who took MCAS did a little better, because the systems all throughout the state have been preparing for MCAS for years. And, you know, the little bits and pieces, you know, when you're riding around in the car... car and you're listening to the radio and you hear about the results of Park and that, you know, today I heard that, you know, what the superintendent said, that they're thinking about, they're, they're not, according to the radio station that I listen to, you know, said that they weren't too impressed with the results and that they're going to, thinking about doing a hybrid test, taking the best of both worlds like we were just talking about. I mean, it just shows you that they don't have it down yet, you know, that this is, this is all experimental on our kids and, which is kind of disappointing. But, I mean, when it comes to the district and the school committee having to make a decision on which way we go, if there is a choice that we can make, I think we really, as a, as a school committee, need to educate ourselves and have experts come in to speak to us on the pros and the cons, both sides of the coin, if in fact, there's a decision that we as a body have to decide. I mean, it could be just taken out of our hands and the state's going to say, "This is the way you're going to do it. These are the rules you got to play by." But if there is, if there is discretion from this body, we need to educate ourselves and get the pros and the cons and hear from people outside the district who are grappling with this on a daily basis, or, you know, I don't even know if it's a daily basis because it's just so, it's, it's still in its test tube phase. You know, someone that worked in the district years ago told me that he finds that public education in some respects is injecting an untested drug in the students and finding out what the end result's going to be, which he found very disappointing. But over his career, he, he found that that, in a lot of concepts, in a lot of ways, things come down from the state in terms of what you're going to be dealing and doling out to our students is untested theories. You know, like, you know, a simple thing. Whoever thought the design of like, you know, the Raymond and the Davis is a good thing for this, for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, schools that are designed for California and the pod systems? Who, who's the fool that said a pod is going to be having four classrooms in one big room? That's a good thing for kids. It's like, are you kidding? Now we all know, this is ridiculunacy, you know, but I'm just saying, you know, that was the type of concept he basically was saying. You, you're injecting these untested, you know, shots into kids' arms and basically seeing what the end result is, you know? So, so, you know, again, if we have discretion as a body, we've got to do our due diligence to, to make the best decision going forward for our students. Mr. Robinson?
And I think it's important too, though, to, to remember, right, that MCAS was a new test at some point too, right? And here we are, however many years later, saying, "Well, we can't leave MCAS." I mean, at some point, these same things were being said about MCAS. I also think it's important for families at the committee to, to kind of set a, set the Common Core aside from the Park. The Common Core is not the Park. The Park is the assessment of the Common Core. And, and so in one context, we're talking about the assessment for, for kind of a framework and, and in one case, we're talking about the framework itself. And, and, you know, I think those are important. You know, when I see the advocacy for or against, they're, they're very closely linked to each other. And simply giving up on the Park is not a reason to give up on the Common Core. And whatever they determine about the Park as an evaluation tool, isn't necessarily a reflection of the Common Core standards either. And so I think, you know, to kind of pull those two things apart and say, what do, what do they mean for our district and, and how are they discreet in their own right? And, and remember that most of what we talk about in education is, is, you know, theories that have evolved over time to best practice. And, and that's the kind of the way that a lot of this works. And some of it is crap, right? I mean, pods are not good. There are plenty of other things that people have been doing this long time can say, "This trend came and went," you know, "And, and we tried it for a little while or we invested some money in it, I mean, you know, and, and it didn't work and so we moved on." And, but I think, you know, the way Ethan started by saying, "We are a district that pilots and, and researches and, and makes our decisions based on evidence versus," you know, not to discredit anybody, but like talk radio, like, I mean, we need to be driven by evidence as a district and as, as a school committee. And, and there is plenty of evidence available to us. And, you know, the politics of this are, is messy as anything and we can't be absorbed by the politics of it. I'm, I'm sorry, we, we, you know, we would do a disservice to our district, to our kids, to our families, to be absorbed by the politics of this because, just like the charter school, right? There's good and bad about charters and there's good and bad about public school systems. The politics of it make it really, really messy. And, and ultimately, it's got to be about what's best for kids. And I think the same is true when it comes to things like the Common Core and how education is evolving around Common Core standards and, and then the, the assessments that are related to it. You know, if you dig deep into this, the states that rejected the Common Core and decided, or the states that rejected Park and decided to build their own assessments, I would encourage you to put those assessments up against the Park. They don't look that different from each other. I'm sorry. They, they, you know, they got rid of a name because there was a lot of pushback from parents and, and advocates and other people, but those assessments didn't end up being all that different from each other. And, and, you know, we may end up with a hybrid. I don't think it's an MCAS or a Park thing at this point. I think it's, how do we come up with a good tool? Right? And, and, and so those are, I don't know that those are healthy discussions for us to have because it's not a one, one or the other. It's, how do we advocate for the best tool for our kids?
Okay, can I add to that? It, it sort of piggybacks on both your points, which I think are excellent points. Brockton does advocate and Brockton does advocate successfully. So that's part of, it's not just that we research, but we actively shape policy decisions. We have Heather Ronan, we have Eileen McQuade out there all the time as Park fellows. That means we are shaping Park discussions. I was involved with all kinds of Park feedback. That doesn't mean I like or dislike Park, but I was involved because, you know what? We're doing Park. We need to know what Park looks like, what's good, what's bad, how it gets better. The reality is, MCAS is a test from a long time ago. That is true. That was not designed to do what it's asked to do. That's true too. It also fundamentally doesn't measure college and career readiness. I don't care what name of a test does, but when you have the percentage of students that we as a Commonwealth have that go off to college that are not ready, we're not doing the right thing. So we have to do something better as we shape those discussions, as we shape the charter school discussions. I think that is a very good thing and we have a healthy amount of skepticism. We go out and do our own research. We don't just listen to other people. That's, that is a real, and as, as Andy says, as long as you keep the focus on what's best for the kids, keep the politics out of it. You always hear me say, "I may like it, I may not like it." That, that isn't the issue. So that is one of the reasons. This is one of the very few districts that I can say, that really has been the focus and it continues to be. And it is a great thing to work in a district like this. So I'm excited about the Park results, even though they're not necessarily good. I think they're going to push from a state level. They're going to push the conversation where it needs to go. And the question is, will the state be ready to listen to us and the other folks and look at the evidence and, and move in a good direction?
But the answer to that would be no. The politics is something that affects what Andy was talking about, the end result. They're the people that are going to make the decisions, like it or not, whether they go to ballot or if they do it as their legislative NPD, people up on our aisle or the State House. The lack that I see for everybody is education about all of this. As the presentation was going on, I was thinking about, talking about computers. We forget the AI part of a computer, the artificial intelligence. How much have we lost as individuals of not doing certain processes that we do automatically? Good, simple example, spelling. We used to learn how to spell. Now, a lot of youngsters press a button. So how much learning is going on there? And yeah, you can do that, but there's certain pieces between that piece of paper and writing it out and what we do as an individual, how we use our brain and how we use the tools. And quite often, I say to youngsters and hold up a phone or a smartphone and say, "This is a tool. This is the brain." That's not the brain, although that's the way they seem to use it. And we forget that. And somehow, we need to bring that back around and also understand that the computer itself has a lot of, what, processes within it that automatically do certain things that we used to do as individuals. So we're losing some of how we think, how we prepare, how we just do those basic things that we used to do. And do we really want to do that? You know, when thinking going forward. And that's, that's a simple piece of, of all what we're talking about. But the major piece, I think, is, we need to have some common definitions of all these things that everybody can understand to make a good vote, if that's what it is, or to go to representatives to say yes or no, or for the educators to understand it and all that goes with it, the monetary and everything else. And like I said, we could go on for years talking about this, as it's been done already. We know it's happening. The question is, how and what do we do? And how can we do the best for our kids when we may have edicts thrown down on us, starting at the federal level to the state level, et cetera? What impact can we have, if any? Do we need to talk to the people over at Harvard Education or wherever across the country? Is it politicians or is it a whole bunch of people? You know, what is it? And it's not a simple answer. I think that's the problem. And we try to do that one-size-fits-all, which the charter school thing became, a couple places have worked well, great, let's do it all everywhere. You can't do that. You don't do it with clothes, you don't do it with what you eat, but yet, people like that because it's simple, it's easy. We, we want the shortcuts instead of, you know, taking our time to think, as somebody said, you know, just to take our time to think. And that's what we have to figure out that we need to do for this process. And also, when it comes to the charter school, which I'll talk about later, it's at the end of our piece here. But that's my little contribution to this thing.
Oh, computers.
There you go.
There you go. Alicia, Mrs. There you go.
Ethan's point about college readiness. I think it's really important that we focus on not necessarily teaching to a test, but teaching to what the kids need to be prepared in the real world. I know my class was the first class to take MCAS and first day of college, I was told to throw out everything that I knew about MCAS. It's not how you learn. It's not how the real world works. And I don't know how many of you remember the hamburger method of teaching, of teaching an essay, but that's what we were taught. We were taught how to prepare an essay in the hamburger method. You had your two slices of bread on the outside, your lettuce, your tomato, and your meat of your essay in the middle. And it stuck with me, but it was something that we didn't use when we got to college or in the real world. So I think it's something really important because that was something that was drilled into us and we need to make sure that we're not drilling certain things into students that they can't use out in the real world just because it's how the test is prepared. Definitely, we need to have a standard of how to test on, you know, their abilities and overall abilities of the districts, but I think that is something we definitely need to focus on.
I couldn't agree with you more. I'm laughing when you're saying that because Ashley was your classmate, my daughter, and went to UNH as an English major. And the first thing that the professor said was, "You kids from Massachusetts, get rid of it. You need to be creative. You need to be thinking. You need to..." Right. And interesting to hear you say that because when you do talk about Common Core, you're, again, talking about higher-order thinking skills, you're talking about, you know, Dr. Doctor, I was just going to say Dr. Elizabeth Barry. That's an omen.
Congratulations.
We're getting there. She's getting there.
No pressure, Liz. No pressure.
But our deputy superintendent, again, has talked to you endlessly, again, about the kind of teaching with Common Core, which leads to readiness for college. So this is exactly what is happening in the district and those are the good things that we continue to talk about.
Anyone else? Mr. Henningson?
Just real quick, so when do we expect to get, or will you be expecting more results for Brockton, I guess? Will we ever see?
No, we, we will see results. They're being vague. They're saying, the press releases are saying, "Later this fall." I don't know why, but, you know, it's, I think Andy pointed out, I was in Massachusetts working in education when MCAS came out the first time. And there were so many headaches that everyone talks now, if you're in the school systems, talk about what a smooth, well-oiled machine it is, you know, the, from the vendor and everyone. It was not that way at all. They went through three or four different contractors. It was just a mess. And so, does it surprise me that results are taking a little longer? No, it doesn't. But I, I don't think they want to come out and say, "You know, guys, we're not going to know anything about how your schools did until the middle of November," because then people might complain about it. So they're just being vague. But they do say, "Later this year."
It intrigues me that the difference between the paper and the computer. I'm, I'm actually a little intrigued on that, but I think what intrigues me more is to see urban school districts as opposed to just a general number.
Right.
How are urban school districts doing? Is that, you know, the one-on-one device type of issue, is that a factor in this equation? And, you know, as Andy said, yeah, there's a lot of politics involved in this whole process, back and forth, for and against. And I think Mr. Minichello is right, we get to bring in a lot of, you know, if we have the options, we're going to bring in a lot of the different sides of the equation to see, you know, where we are. But I, I'm very curious to see how, you know, from a, from a technological standpoint, how that all fits and interacts, whether or not, you know, my thought process of, of, you know, if we're going to go with a technology-based test, then the state should be providing us with the funding to give our, our children those one-on-one devices. But we need data to kind of support that on a state level, saying, "Okay, well, here's Brockton, here's Lawrence, here's Lowell, here's these urban school districts and you can clearly see your difference." Because I would guess that that might be a little bit different, that, that number, when you see the computer. They might enjoy using the computer, but I would think that that number might shrink a lot.
Well, as soon as we know, I will make sure that you all know. Great. Anyone else? Okay.
Just a couple of more notes. I want to thank people out there. We have had our International Baccalaureate Review this week. I know there were parents that were involved, certainly teachers that spent quite a bit of time up at Brockton High School. Mr. Minichello, I think you had an opportunity today to take part in it. I know I also did with a team from Central to talk about our support for the International Baccalaureate Program at the high school. We also have a coordinated program review going on in the district, looking at our SPED classes and population, looking at our English language learners, and looking at our vocational technology programs up at the high school. So again, we'll be reporting, it's been a very busy school year already. It certainly has been busy this week with reviews. I did ask, are there any more reviews to come forward? I, I just feel that there are just no others out there when you think back to, to when I started as superintendent. We started with the district review. We've had the accreditation of our high school, CPR review, IB reviews at our two schools. I think we're done. So again, we'll, we'll keep you updated. And I also just want to mention with the MASs and MASs conference coming up, I think it's November 4th through 7th, we do have a presentation, you saw the breakfast in the classroom, there's actually going to be a discussion about universal breakfast, fighting hunger for student achievement. And Mr. Minichello is going to be representing your school committee and talking on a panel, I believe. So that is on Thursday at 10:45.
Yes.
So thank you for doing that. And just one more note, we've had a couple of appointments. George Donovan is our interim principal that will be leading the Baker School, which opens up his position at this point. So we are advertising for an interim assistant principal. We also have Michelle Connors, who's been named the new associate principal at East Middle School. I'm very excited for that leadership team. And George Lewis will be taking over as the interim assistant principal at West Middle School in the absence of Diane Lynch, who is our interim principal at the Huntington. So we're finally getting our administrative positions set for the year. So congratulations to them. I know they'll do an excellent job. I know they'll do an excellent job.
I'd like to thank the parents that appeared this morning at the high school to speak with the I B panel. They were very thoughtful in their comments, very informative. Some of the parents had a couple of students that went through the I B process in a partial sense in that they weren't full I B students. They took some I B classes, but then they had other children in their families that were full I B graduate diploma students. So, it was nice to hear from both perspectives. The team, there were two people, and I think they were impressed with the earnestness of the parents. The parents, you know, basically expressed what they liked about the program and certainly expressed some of the criticisms that they saw that in some cases could be improved, but made it clear to the I B committee, team, so to speak, that they appreciate the option and the benefits that the program provides for their students and that they feel it's very beneficial. So, that was very nice of them to take their time to come in for a half an hour this morning to do that on their own time. Another item that I'd like to compliment is the football team did a great job the other night when they played Durfee. And the halftime show was spectacular. I went to the Severian game. The results of the game, not so good, but the fans, the Severian fans and parents were so impressed with the halftime show because our kids went and performed, and I think they were blown away. I'm friends with one of the teachers that teaches at Severian, and she was floored at the performance because they just don't have that type of a program at Severian. The, you know, it's just amazing to see how many students, be it athletes, be it performers, be it musicians, be it dancers, baton twirlers, kids that are working the equipment filming, the technology side. I mean, it's between 200 and 300 students. So, it's really a great, a great complement to this school system in terms of the options for our students. And it's important that we maintain that at all costs because, in a lot of respects, it's what motivates students to do well in school and to be able to participate in those types of programs. And Mr. McCrina will tell you over and over again what he thinks, the language of music, how it benefits the mind, and how he believes it's an indicator of children's success. And he's got some data to back it up, too. So, that was great. I think the next time you'll be able to see them would probably be the last time is if you go to the Thanksgiving Day game, which is, I believe this year, the Cape Cod Bowl will be over at Bridgewater this year, right? 10 o'clock, is it, I think it's 10 o'clock Thanksgiving Day. Bundle up, I think it's probably going to be cool. But, you know, it was a great show this year. They had some really good music. Elton John, Georgia On My Mind, Pacheco, Michael Jackson, Thriller. It was great music, and the choreography this year was spectacular. It was great, so.
To the point that the band takes part in the choreography now.
That's, yeah, they do a number with Thriller, so it was great, you know? Mr. Henningson, you're always at the games. Do you care to comment about?
A lot of the seniors got awards and various accolades for being, you know, part of that production, but it's incredible. It's, you know, every time I go, I'm amazed at how many kids actually participate in this whole process. I mean, hundreds in the band and the football team, the cheerleaders, the baton twirlers, like you said. It's just absolutely amazing. And I get to have Cape Cod pizza when I'm at the game, so that's a great thing.
There's a bonus, there's a benefit, a bonus.
We'd be happy to help Severian with baton twirlers.
Yeah, I bet you would.
Yeah.
So, well, they did have the Fontbon crew.
They do, that's right.
The Fontbon cheerleaders and acrobatics, I guess. It was sort of an acrobatic team, so. But it was like the little town, and then all of a sudden, the big city came on the field, and it was like, move over, get out of the way, we're here and we'll show you how it's done. It was great. Anyone else with anything that they've attended or care to comment about? Mr. Henningson?
I just wanted to update people. On October 24th, the Harlem Wizards basketball team will be playing some of the George School student, ah, yeah, not students, but the actual teachers themselves at the high school. It's at 7 o'clock. You can still get tickets. I have courtside seats myself. It should be an exciting event. There'll be flyers distributed throughout all the schools in the district shortly, if not already. And the other thing I wanted to mention is I had the pleasure of attending a presentation by some people at, who spoke on restorative justice. And it was actually quite informative, and it's something that, you know, I'm looking forward to continuing the dialogue with these people on this concept and how we can maybe look into it further and expand upon that concept.
There's some cons to that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Always pros and cons to everything.
You got that right. Anyone else? Any further business, anything to consider at the next meeting or put on for a subcommittee meeting, anyone? Mr. Jordan?
New business if you're getting to that.
New business, then.
Okay. So, I mentioned earlier a little something, just with the charter schools coming back in again, we spent a lot of time on that last year, and New Heights ought to come over and thank us and applaud us for giving them what they needed to put together a proposal. But besides all that, I know we're doing some things to look in the future, but my thoughts are, we far enough out of the box that we can be really ahead of anything that's coming down, that we stay out where we have been in the past, i.e., not worrying that much. We still do what we have to do about the charter school, but are we looking maybe into technology? Or I know we're doing, thinking about some online kinds of things. Is it feasible or possible to do more of that, especially at the public school level? How would that be done? Those kinds of things that we can, again, be in the forefront where we've always been. And still, I know we have to fight the charter school, but I don't want to let us get over-involved with that and not think about down the road and still keep that guiding edge that we've always had. Only thing I can think of is technology, but it may be other ways of dealing. I liked earlier with the business of the community service versus detention. You know, those kinds of things, I think, are things that need to look into a lot more for the whole system. It makes a lot more sense. I think the backend of something like that is, if you clean up this area when everybody else is out there dirtying it, you're going to say something. If you did it yourself, you're not going to dirty it, you know? So, it's that kind of a process that we know exists, it's always been out there, but we don't always utilize it. And are we doing enough as a district to just make sure we stay in the forefront of everything that we possibly can? And I know we have a little, a lot of little small things that we do that we don't always hear about, but just to make sure that it's happening.
Mr. Jordan, you're talking about, in other words, best practices of, with disciplining students?
Well, that's one piece, but along the lines of, we challenged the charter schools last year, we won that. Given the political and the other situations, if we use that same tactic that we use, we wouldn't win, I don't believe, at this point in time. Whether it comes in or not, that's something we don't have control of, but what will it do to us, we think, we know what that is. So, then, what can we do to ensure that we can keep everything we're doing now in place as best possible? A lot of that has to do with money, but if we don't have the money, then what can we do to still give our kids the best education and the best of everything that we've always done?
Well, I certainly will tell you that, you know, we have discussions, you know, all the time about the budget. We're not waiting for the winter to come, where we start to get into budget discussions. We're certainly able to look down the line as far as what's going to happen with the charter. We're going to continue with our strategic plan. We're going to continue with our budget priorities. These are things I think we have talked about, talking about during our retreat. I know we're waiting to finish up a couple of things before we set a retreat date, which would be the continuation of the superintendent goals for the coming year, but we can certainly have this discussion as we start to populate our retreat agenda items.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on our new business? With regard to future subcommittee meetings, I'm hoping to have all of the data in with regard to the evaluation of the superintendent. I'll put that into a master document, and then we'll be scheduling a, basically in conjunction with that, scheduling a superintendent contract subcommittee meeting to discuss the superintendent's contract. We're, will be coming up on three years. Where did the time go? So, I'm hoping to, what's that?
Yes. Next Tuesday.
Yes. So, I'm not going to set a time for that because I need to put all, piece everything together.
That's not happening.
No, separate. But I just wanted to give people a heads up that that will follow the evaluation. So, you know, within, I would say, you know, 30 days, we'll probably be dealing with that as well as the evaluation. So. Anything else? Anything further to report? Hearing nothing else?
All in favor?
Thank you for attending. Adjourn.